It's very quiet in here.
We're supposed to...
Inspiring of the...
Because it used to be a church, they all...
Yeah.
We'll call this meeting to order, your CCW Committee of the Whole, the town of Cardston. I'd like to welcome Corey from Channel 32 and Larry Peterson from Temple City Star. We'll start with their opening prayer and we'll have... we'll get Councilor Creed to give our opening prayer.
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather together for our council, Committee of the Whole, meeting this day, we thank thee for the opportunity to live in this choice community. We're grateful for the citizens of our town and our area. We're grateful for all of the other blessings and enjoyments we have here in this area. As we meet now, we pray that we'll be guided to understand those things which are on our agenda and be able to make wise recommendations. And these things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank Councilor Creed.
I have three additions and adoption of the agenda. We have one addition, and that now is under nine C correspondent, and that is EMS dispatch. Okay, any other additions?
Move the option, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Mayor moves the adoption of the amended minutes there?
Agenda.
Or the agenda there, all in favor? Our four adoption of the minutes for May 7th, 2013, not a motion for that?
I've got a question.
The second, Councilor Dahl make that motion. Any questions?
There's one line here and it doesn't make sense. I think there's a word missing where it says Gordon does not feel that moving is necessary and that a flushing station down would meet the town's requirements. I think there should be something else in there.
Where are you, David?
That's the...
Gordon Atkins.
Gordon Atkins. It's the third paragraph down, fourth, I guess, just...
If we take that word down?
Yeah, that would probably do it.
Mr. Chairman, a very, 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 very picky thing that I've noticed. Moved by Councilor Edmonds to extend the meeting until 7:20, and then a few minutes later, moved by Councilor Edmonds to extend the meeting until 7:20. I, you know, maybe one at 7:10 or actually, it's probably...
Probably 7:30.
7:20 and 7:25, probably.
Well, that's quite a better discussion. So, 7:30.
Anyway, that's just a very timed thing.
That's okay, yeah, it's probably good to have correct minutes there. Okay, so just the two amendments to the minutes of May 7th then? Okay, motion to accept the, or sorry, to adopt the minutes of May 7th with those amended. Okay, so Councilor Dahl?
Yep.
Moves out, in all the favor? Any questions?
I'm listening here, so no questions.
Delegations.
If you've missed the meeting, like I missed last month, should I be voting on this or not?
I think it's okay.
Oh, sure.
Well, you still have the minutes, so...
You won't.
There was a discussion on that with the Kishet Foundation.
We do have a few delegations tonight. One is at 4 o'clock with Richard Bengrin, and that may be changed a little bit later on. And then 4:15 with Bart Atwood, so we'll have to work with whoever comes in first gets the stage. So we'll just keep going under seven, new business background. Finance and administration, Linda Burwell has a donation request for us there. She's requesting that we waive $1,020 fee for rental of the building if it's over seven days at four hours a day. Any questions on that? Just Mr. Mayor and Councilor Corey?
I have two questions. I think I know the answer, but I don't think I could find it in here, so I think we probably should clarify. These, who will be taking the lessons, the practices? Are they required to pay to be part of a group? I'm guessing they're not. And the second question is, is the concert that they're going to have at the end, is that a free concert? And I'm guessing it is, it would make sense. Because my concern is, before I would consider the fee waiver very worthwhile activity here, but I think we need to clarify that if we're going to waive a fee, that's it. We better make sure that nobody has to pay to be part of that handout group or has to pay to come into the concert.
Okay, actually, I'll just let Marion, she has...
Just as part of the application, she states here that the objective is to raise funds for Rett syndrome, which I assume then they would be charging to attend the concert.
Okay, so, Mayor, can you tell me exactly what does that $1,020 represent? Does it represent the rental for four hours of the gym?
Four hours for that many days, yes, correct.
So how many days are we talking about, then?
I believe it's eight days. Councilor Smith just said, yeah.
Eighteenth, nineteenth, twenty-second, twenty-sixth.
And then twenty-ninth for the concert.
So are those children, schoolchildren, or is that a group from the community? What is it exactly? I couldn't be clearer on that one.
My understanding is that this is a handbill choir that has been organized at the school level. I don't think that it is Westwood School-sponsored, but it has been part of that choir program at the school.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I remember discussions in a prior council meeting roughly five years ago, and I just think it would be of interest to council that when it comes to charitable donations, I'm not sure it's wise that we make decisions on what charities we'll support and what charities we won't. I don't recall the specific charity that was being discussed three or four years ago, but at that time, and again, we're a different council. We have the right to vote and to choose and to support or not to support. But we have to remember that by waiving, by waiving the fees, we are in essence, while the activity is wonderful and it's enriching for those involved, and it might be enriching for the community, that's not the question, we are in essence making choices surrounding what charitable foundations or what worthwhile causes we will choose to support on behalf of our taxpayers. And that's in essence part of what's happening if we waive the fees.
Isn't that our choice?
That is our choice, but I'm not sure that it's our choice to make. I think we should possibly let people make their own choices.
This group has donated countless hours towards town activities over the last, I don't know how many years and years and years and years. If you read our organizational information, we remember state server ones every year. Town July 1st, July 1st party, just about every year. They go to the senior centers, they go to individual homes. They're not paid, so I think they really do try to enhance the community in a lot of different ways, so. One of their ways is to raise awareness for Rett syndrome.
My question, Marion, how does this request fit our policy on donations?
It does fit within the policy, but the policy allows council the discretion. The only comment I would have is, this is similar to the waiver that you just approved for the Alzheimer's Walk. Right. The rental of the Lions Park.
Exactly right.
It's not a cash donation, yet it is, I understand the mayor saying it's a donation because you're waiving the fees, so, but it is very similar to that.
It's a contribution of town facilities.
Yes, correct.
That's good, that's good information, thank you.
I would agree with Councilor Corey too. I think this group has done, you know, a lot of work for the town there for free. I mean, we just need to ask them, and they're more than willing to come and help us out at events.
Our town does pride itself on the number of people that we train for our theaters, for our musical things, and to me, this is just lockstep with that. We've been doing this for years and years, and just trains these kids up, and that's what Carson's quite well known for, is their musical ability, their different theaters and all these things, and so I...
But, Mr. Chairman, that's really not, for me, the crux of the matter. The crux of the matter for me is, will we donate our facility and then allow them to charge for the facility that we've donated? And so the crux of the matter for me is, and I think we probably have set a precedent here with the Alzheimer's Walk, I think we have, and so that, for me, is the crux of the matter, is that we're not maybe losing out any cash, we're not handing anybody any cash. So, that, I think, is more the crux of the matter.
Personally, I may view it from two different point of view. One, it fits a policy, so that's fine. And secondly, the money that we'll raise is not going to fill their pocket, but it's going to support an association as the Alzheimer. So in that sense, we created a precedent, so on those who can't, I would say there is merit in the application.
Mr. Chairman, I think a lot of us are aware of Alzheimer's is very present in our society, and Cardston specifically. I am unaware of Rett syndrome. I don't know a person with Rett syndrome. Could we have some awareness of Rett syndrome brought to our attention in terms of, without many, any names? Are there six people in our school system that have Rett syndrome? In other words, I guess I'm concerned, is the money raised going to leave the community or will it work in the community? That, to me, is another significant factor as well.
If it makes it easier, maybe we just tell, like, ask for donations instead of charge at the door, because 99% will donate anyhow. That makes it a little bit easier.
I just wish we had some information. Is Rett syndrome something that is evident in Cardston? I just, really, I'm not thrilled with the money possibly leaving the community.
We'll just hear from Marion, and then we'll...
My understanding is that her family is personally affected by that syndrome, and I think that's the intent of this fundraiser, is to bring awareness as to what the disease is and how it's affecting families in the community. You know, I can't speak to individuals, but my understanding is that there is some effect in the community.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to pursue this a little bit further. It's a very broad statement to say raise awareness. I would like to know how they wish to raise awareness. I'd like to know the how of it.
Can we table that? Could we have Mrs. Burnwell come and do a presentation, maybe?
Well, I think let's have a motion on it here, whether we want to waive the $1,020 that they're asking to the facility there, so.
Move to table, Mr. Chairman? Or we can recommend in this body, and maybe by the time we come to vote in a week, we can have a presentation with some ideas of the process or how it will be, have the awareness raised.
When is it, when's the concert?
It's going to be in the summer, at the end of...
July 18th through 29th?
The concert is...
Eighteenth, nineteenth, twenty-first.
Twenty-ninth, the July, 29th is the concert.
We still have time to deal with it.
It says here that it's a, people who have it are usually female, and Rett syndrome are prone to gastrointestinal disorders, and up to 80% have seizures. They typically have no verbal skills, and 50% of the individuals, in fact, do not walk. Coliosis, both failure, and constipation is very common. It can be problematic, so. I guess there could be people in town here that have it that we never know.
X1 and every 15,000 YP members.
Okay, so we got a motion on the table, or if the table is motioned, until when, like, what do you, like, what would you like?
Why don't you get a table and you stop?
Okay.
And then what would you like, or would you like her to come in here and...
I think I would like to have some more information for myself, so that if people ask me in the community, what is Rett syndrome? I can answer them. If people say to me, are there people in the community? What will be the process of raising the awareness? I can tell them what it is. So back to your question, I'm willing to remove my motion to table, but I would like council to have the understanding that by next Tuesday, when we will vote, if we do recommend, I'd like some information before I make my final vote in seven days.
I think there's wisdom in having Mrs. Burnwell come and present, since it's affectable.
Okay, well, so are you withdrawing the motion to table?
Yes, I withdraw my motion to table, in the interest of time, because if we don't have a recommendation to council, or if we do, pardon me, we can still vote one way or the other, but I want to be on record as saying, I would like to hear some more information on Rett syndrome. Is it evident in Cardston? And what will be some of the thoughts, the processes for raising the awareness? I can think of a lot of worthwhile causes that this money can go to. I'd like to feel comfortable in knowing that that money will stay in the community and will not leave and go somewhere else.
Okay, well, let's make a motion. We'll have a motion to recommend to council that we waive the fees for Linda Burwell's donation.
Do we consider, do we consider that recommendation?
It's just a recommendation, and you can change your vote. Next council, we may be like so. Anyone want to make that motion? Okay, Councilor Creed makes a motion.
We'll consider that donation, and council...
Do you waive the donation?
Fee waiver?
Yeah, I'll consider the fee waiver.
Okay, and then maybe we can have her come in and just maybe speak to us just before turn next to our next council.
Councilor Cronin mentioned to me, Mr. Chairman, that these kinds of donations and fee waivers pursuant to policy, the money needs to stay in Carson if it's, you know, if it's possible. But that's part of the consideration.
No, that's great, I mean, excellent, you know, valid points, Mary, but everybody will appreciate that, so let's move.
Just to clarify, the intent of that is that the event would take place in the community, right? So that's, yeah.
Okay, any more questions?
Says it's a disorder of the development of gray matter in the brain. So it's, it's dependent, it's caused by a mutation in a gene.
Well, maybe let's, let's carry on with the vote here, and then we'll have her come and speak to us next, next council meeting. So all in favor of our meeting, council? Can you make a motion? Okay, Carrie?
So, Mr. Chairman, can we then go on record as requesting that Mrs. Burnwell come and visit with us in seven days to give us some more ideas of what they intend to do?
Yeah, yeah, like I say, I mean, nothing's been in stone, it's just a recommendation to council, and I've heard you change your vote next, next council.
Or at least provide us with information. You know, if she can't be here, at least, yeah, answer some of those questions that have been raised. Sure, inform us, yeah, a little better, whatever, so. That's good. Okay, moving on, seven...
I'm a little bit sick in here.
Okay, sorry, Bart. Here's Bart Atwood there, he's our head water guy. Let's see, so Bart's our 4:15 delegation there, and he'll be presenting on our drinking water safety plan, which is something, something new that all municipalities are required to have this, so we'll just let him have the floor. Thanks, Bart.
What's that? It's not a week. Is it working?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, in 2012, the Alberta government introduced the drinking water safety plan. Well, they didn't introduce it, they adopted this plan, which comes from the World Health And so they adopted it and are implementing this plan throughout Alberta, throughout all the water plants, and even in the private sector as well for their drinking water supply. Now, just want to read this one statement so you can understand what this is for. "A drinking water safety plan is a systematic method of risk management that may be applied to any water supply system. It is based on the analysis of detailed knowledge of the whole water supply system from source to tap, and its fundamental purpose is to ensure the safety of the supply at all times. It considers four main areas of supply: source, treatment, distribution, network, and customer. The risks attached to each section are analyzed using a combination of likelihood and consequence, and the most significant risks must then be assigned and appropriate mitigation. The plan records all of this information in various forms and is updated on a regular basis. It is a living document that provides the operator with an efficient means of managing risk and is a useful single source of information about the supply." So we have been working on this drinking water safety plan for about a year now, two, and what we do is go through, and from source, we draw the schematics of it and go through all the details of the plan, what's involved in it. Then once we get all the information gathered together, then we go through all the health, all the hazards, and we do a hazard assessment on everything in the source. And what you have in front of you is the actual source risk assessment, and this is a summary of the, of some of the risks that have come up in our drinking water safety plan. And I want you to know that it is a working document, it's a spreadsheet, and we review it at least once a year, and we're looking at maybe twice a year that we review it in the fall and in the spring. So as we review this, this gives us an opportunity to bring forth to administration and council the needs of our water system in regards to keeping it safe and risk-free, or not risk-free, but I would say managed, the risk management that it's taken care of. I don't know if you want me to go through the risks that have come up, but there's a few that really, in the source, we don't have a lot of control of. We have yeast activity on the reservoirs, and as you may have heard, last year, we had the cam going off. That helped a lot to keep them off for a little while. But the other contaminations that may happen in the source, we are able to take care of it in our treatment, and that's how we manage that risk. The treatment risks that we have found have come forward with mainly because of past experiences of what has happened at the water plant, and this is a risk that we need to manage, and it stays in the forefront of our attention so that we can manage it appropriately. Mainly the failure of coagulant dosing, which causes us, which has caused us problems in the past, and so that is in forefront. And because of that coagulant dosing that happens, we also have a problem, we only have one filter operating, and that filter has the capacity to actually break through contamination. And so we have to manage that risk by ensuring that that filter is not overloaded. So these are... And the, I'll just state, the contamination of treated water is a result of vandalism. We feel that that is always a risk. If somebody really wanted to vandalize the plant, it's, you know, in an area where it's accessible, and it could happen. So we need to keep that in our risk management and keep it up, so that we're aware that things are locked up, things are secured, and that any area that may find a way that can be contaminated, that we eliminate that risk. And then it goes down to network risks, and we fill the, in there, we don't have a lot of risks in our network, except for we have some valve problems that we are trying to instigate a valve maintenance program, and that's why that's in the forefront, because it is something that we need to take care of. But again, this is a working document, we'll be going over this every year, and as we go over it, then we come to a summary sheet, and we look to plan out what we need to do to manage those risks that come forward. Any questions?
Yeah, but I have a question regarding the safety of the plant itself. What are the level of security that you have in place for that plant?
Just locked doors.
So it's a gate, it's a gate you're talking about?
We don't have a gate, there's no fenced-off gate. It's just locked doors on the water plant itself. There is a gate on the approach going into the property, but that's being used by residents.
So it's not, never locked? Okay. Another question I had, the contamination by, with pesticide, I'm not really aware how the pesticide spreading is done in that area, but is there any aerial spraying at all in this area?
Not in this area, no, it's mostly agriculture and general.
Okay, so it's not done at all, so that's really a very small risk?
Yeah.
Is this a good thing for the town of Cardston?
It is, well, it's a good thing for our plant, it's brought a lot of attention to risks that we really need to look to. The Alberta government has provided the spreadsheet for us, have done a lot of work in bringing this, and it's really been, not a lot of work for us, we just had to plug in a lot of our specific things into this plan. It's locked, we have to have it, we have to have this completed by the end of this year. We do have it completed now, and it is a live document for us now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it fair to say that the pesticide contamination is a result of surface water crossing cultivated bodies where spray is used in agricultural applications, and those surface waters can end up in our pond, is that, or in the streams?
That's mainly what we've seen, and we've done studies on the Lee Creek with pesticide city, that was done in 2007, and they did find during runoff, during rain, that there was a lot of pesticides coming off, runoff coming into the streams.
So how well does a filtration system eliminate that contaminant?
We haven't had any breakthrough of pesticides, mainly because we, during runoff time, we usually don't pump from the stream or creek or the river, it's usually too dirty. It's usually too dirty for us to pump.
So the water is safe in Cardston, and we, we well on our way to have good water?
Oh, yes, we are.
Thank you.
Our reservoirs keep that safe because we, you know, we just simply don't pump the river and creek.
Thank you.
County Security, and this isn't necessarily referring to vandalism security, but you'd have certain alarms that will go off if there's, if certain conditions exist at the plant. Is that?
Yes.
What, what conditions will trigger alarms at the plant?
Uh, the conditions that will trigger alarm is a low chlorine. If there's a low chlorine in the water, that fluid from the plant, that'll shut the plant down and call out. Filters, if we get all filters going offline, that'll call us out. We have a door security alarm. If the door is breached, then that alarm will call us out. And if we have chlorine leak, a gas chlorine leak in the actual chlorine room, that will call us out. And those are the main alarms that'll actually call us out. There's other alarms that go off, but they don't call out an operator.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Okay. Thank you very much, there, Bart. Appreciate your, all your time and the work you've done on the drinking water safety plan. Yeah, safety plan, thanks. Richard Bengry is here with COP. He's the new managing, head COP guy, so we'll let him have the floor for a minute. We'll give you about 10 minutes there, Richard, and then five minutes for?
Probably won't be 10 minutes. Well, thank you to the mayor and council. I see Deputy Mayor Smith is sitting in the chair. Welcome to that. Thank you for having me. What I wanted to do is, I've just been newly elected as the chairman of the COP program again. I was just as a citizen on patrol for many years, thankfully. But to give you a brief history, the COP program in Cardston was started in the August of about 1996, so we've been around about 17 years. We started with two members, myself and Corporal Piper. And the reason why I looked at the COP program is I was living on a corner in a property that's for sale now, it was a big house there that I owned, and my neighbors were all senior citizens' neighbors, and they were always complaining about having their sprinklers and their hoses stolen and things like that off their lawn. So I sat down with Corporal Piper one day, and I said, "Hey, what can we do about this? This is ridiculous." And he said, "Well, you're the youth going on the block. Maybe you should walk around the block and have a, have a watch at nighttime." So I got on my arcade computer at that time, and I started looking at programs that, that encouraged citizens to take action. We are not, and I want to, to make sure that, that everybody knows that, that we do not take action, physical action, you know, it's, it's, it's eyes and ears for the RCMP. We're the second program in Alberta. We were the second program in Alberta to ever get started in Alberta. The first program was Pincher Creek, and they started about six months before us. We've had as many members as up to 18 members. We're down to 13 right now, and we're looking at bringing on more members, inviting more members. It's simply a volunteer program. We have done many, many things in the community, and I think a lot of you are aware of some of the things that we do. We do traffic control. The biggest part of our program is traffic control, and we do it for powwows, for parades, for midnight madness. We do it for, for dances that, that go late at night. Halloween, we patrol in Halloween, and I want to thank the Dairy Queen at this time because they're the, the business in town that supports the COP program at Halloween. We're invited in later at night, just before closing of the, of the Dairy Queen, and we're invited to have a, a light lunch, a hamburger and a drink and stuff like that, and that's donated by the Dairy Queen. And our members really appreciate that because we, we start about 5 o'clock in the afternoon, in the evening on Halloween, and we go as late as 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning, depending on the action of what's happening around town. We've done traffic control for accidents. When we first got started, we had several major accidents in the community, and our RCMP are still patrolling our town, and they're, they're also responsible for the surrounding area. So if they have a fatality accident, it's pretty hard for them to stay in town and wait for the investigative RCMP unit to come out of that breach or out of Calgary. So they called on the COP at times to come in and direct the traffic around the accident scene and make sure that that accident scene is secured until the investigative team arrives. And then the investigative team arrives, and they'll ask us to stay on site and just control the traffic while they're taking their markings and their measurements and so forth. We've been called out on missing persons. We've done numerous missing persons searches, and this is a, a unique area that we, we get out there and, and work with the people and look for missing persons. We do property checks for snowbirds and property checks for people who go on vacations, and it's strictly volunteer. We don't ask for any monetary pay for this, so a lot of people will ask us, "Well, we pay you. Just make a donation to our program." And we have a lot of people that will, will take advantage of the program and will go on holidays, making sure that their properties are secure. And what we do there is we just simply drive, in the wintertime, we'll drive in, walk around the property, make sure that their tracks are in the driveway. On a daily basis, if it's snowing, we'll do it two, three times a day and walk around the property. So there's footprints. People know that there's somebody there in the property. In the summertime, we'll actually pull in, and sometimes we'll leave a vehicle. One of us will have two or three vehicles, which I enjoy, and we'll leave a vehicle parked in the driveway and just leave it there. And so, you know, those who are interested in checking that property out, they see a vehicle parked, parked in the driveway, they're not going to go much farther. We put out a presentation folder about 11, 12 years ago, and it was a very beautiful folder, and it had all sorts of information in it. The RCMP supplied us with the information. Corporal Patrick Webb was the information officer for the RCMP for the K Division. He supplied us with home safety invasion, personal safety pamphlets, bike safety, Uber bus safety. All this kind of stuff was tucked into these presentation folders. We delivered 1,305 of those presentation folders, and we had emergency phone numbers in there, poison control centers, and immediate action, what you could do in immediate action in choking incidents and stuff like that. And they become somewhat invaluable until the 911 number come up, and then our emergency numbers were, were no longer needed, except the 911. We've done traffic control on, on major fires, and we've been called out at all times at night. We can, we can be called out by the RCMP at 2 o'clock in the morning if we have a missing person or if we have a traffic accident and they need help. And so we're, we're out there doing it. We're out there, involved in the community, and we enjoy it. And like I said, we're, we're involved in this program. We do foot patrols, and we do, we do car patrols. It's costly to do the car patrols now because when I started back in 1996, I think fuel was about 35 cents a liter. Now it's just about four times that. And so it becomes costly. So a lot of our members have opt into the program of foot patrols. And what we do is we'll, we'll literally start at the top of Main Street. We'll go down Main Street and check every door open, and then we'll go up the other side, and then we'll go through the back alley and check all the, all the doors and stuff in the back alley. We'll go through the school, we'll go through the cemetery, we'll ride through the cemetery, we go out to the agrodome, through the agrodome, and any site that we feel is, is open to, to break and enter or graffiti, we try to curb the graffiti, we're, we're there. And we have magnetic signs for the side of our units, but when we first started this, people see somebody out there with a marked vehicle, and they're, they're not going to do anything. But if you don't have a marked vehicle, you know, they just think you're just a pass by. We've parked on main avenues in town, like Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue, and we've watched for door handle flippers. And all of you know what a door handle flipper is? The people who walk up the street, flip the door handle, see if the cars have walked. We watch for that kind of stuff. We have now access to a police radio, which is directly responsive to the RCMP into the office and also into the, into the officers who are on duty. I've initiated a mileage check sheet. Jeff, if you'd like to make the passes around, if you'd like to see them. We've got, I'm going to ask all of the volunteers at our next meeting, which is June the 12th, if they'll start these, these mileage check sheets. And what it does is, is it gives the member's name, a start mileage, an end mileage, a total mileage, and it also gives them a foot patrol so they can do a brief description of the foot patrol. Do you have any? I think I have. Come on, please. In that package also, you'll see that there's a registration form for the provincial COP program. That was organized probably 10 years after our program got started, but we're, I was meeting with Corporal Brown when I got the phone call from Jeff, and we were discussing our, our membership in the provincial program, and he says it's a positive situation because we want to know what other communities are doing, other cities are doing. And so I think we're going to bring it up, I'll bring it up at our next meeting and take it to the membership, and I think we'll send in our registration. That will also, we believe, will give us a provincial ID number. Now, what we need a provincial ID number for is simply when we phone in the dispatch and say, "This is Richard Bengry. I'm a COP, and I'm out patrolling Cardston," they'll, they'll either check me by one or two things, either my name or my provincial ID number. And also, we have to go through a security check to be signed up to the, to the COP program, and you can understand why. We have in the past found public's doors wide open on their homes, and one prominent citizen left, went down to his vacation cottage on the weekend, and he left on Friday night, and one of our members happened to be driving by, saw the front doors wide open on his house, and tried to get a hold of him, couldn't get a hold of him, tried every way, in fact, to find out where he was and where they were. We finally tracked down and found out that, that he was in Montana, and so we parked a vehicle and had a person sit in his driveway until Sunday afternoon. We didn't get a hold of him down in Montana, but we sat there from Friday night right through to Sunday afternoon when he got home, and making sure that his house was secured and because there was a lot of things in that home that could be taken and removed if they wanted to.
Richard, just, just in the interest of time here, we, you know, we appreciate all the things that the COP does for the community. Is there like special requests that you're looking for specifically from the?
Yes, I've got one request. If I come to you for funding, for, for an allocation of funding, I'd like you to review it very closely, but I also got one more request. I'd like to have an assigned member of this council as a liaison between council and our group to come to our meetings and, and work with us, and so that the information can be passed on to council. And I, and I'm going to make a request if I can. I might be out of line, but I'd like to have Councilor Crowman, if she would, if she could take it upon herself. I don't know what her schedule's like or anything like that, but that would be up to, to you and the council to make that decision.
Sure, if you'd like to, yeah, pass it on to the administration or if they can bring it to council, absolutely.
Yeah. But that's, that's the highlights of our program, questions and answers.
Counselor Creep. I appreciate all the work that you, you do with this program, Richard. Now that I know that you're, you're the, the chairman of this, are you, are you the person I now contact for help with our powwow parking and traffic control?
Yes.
I'll be talking to you then.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. When you leave your vehicle, when you do foot patrols, what is your attire? Do you have a vest? Do you have some big letters, not FBI or CIA on it, or FBNY or something like that?
At this point in time, we don't do it. Corporal Brown was looking at my yellow shirt, and he, he really liked the yellow shirt. And so I phoned Ryan, along with my marketing, and I says, "Get me some bright shirt on, the yellow shirt with our, with our crest and our names on it, be it very visible. It's nice and bright. I look like a walking canary," but he likes that. And so we'll be looking at that. We've had jackets in the past, we've had pullovers, but it's summertime, and our jackets are getting old and outdated. Our, our heavy coats, winter coats are old and outdated. We've had hats. Very few of those are around anymore. So that's, you know, we basically just walk around.
Any more questions? One more, Counselor Crow.
This question is from Marion. Marion, in our budget, I know that there is a line there for a COP, so there is something there for funding allocation on a yearly or bi-yearly, something of that sort?
On an annual basis, we do have money budgeted to fund the COP. It used to come through the FCSS program, but they've eliminated the ability for us to fund through that grant, so now it comes out of general tax revenue.
And there is, I remember seeing that line.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's great, there. Thank you very much, there.
Thank you.
And good luck in your endeavors, and thanks for all the good that you do in the COP program there.
Thank you.
Richard.
When are your meetings?
Morning?
Come soon.
Richard, if you don't mind me asking, when are your meetings?
Uh, every, every once a month, first Wednesday of every month. So, well, this one will be June the 12th.
Yep, what time?
And it's just before our family fun run on the June 15th.
And at what time in the evening?
At 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
And if we need to move that, Counselor, we can do that.
See, she's got her yellow shirt on tonight.
She has her shirt on.
Okay, so let's move on here. Seven, eight point two, well, the Emergency Services Dispatching Agreement. That is, there's agreement that we've been working under between the City of Lethbridge and the town of Cardston for our ambulance and our fire dispatching services. The Alberta, the Aguants Service is now being centralized to Calgary, so that agreement has to be reworked with the, with the City of Lethbridge. Administration's been working over the past year with Lethbridge to come, and, sorry, administration and our legal department have been working with the, with the City of Lethbridge to try and pound out an agreement that's going to work for both municipalities there. So they've come up with the agreement that's in front of us here, and if there's any questions, if anyone's ready to do it, there's any questions that may be concerning due at this time. Administration's recommending that we accept that agreement because it has been worked and reworked until it's, until it fits both our municipalities there, so. because it has been worked and, and reworked until it, until it fits both our municipalities there, so.
I just was talking to Marion a little bit earlier on and was saying, now that we have separated the fire from the ambulance, totally separated in our town, I wanted to know how the, this agreement was fitting the bill. And Marion said, "Well, that, that bill, that, that agreement really was dated December the first, the first of January 2012, and therefore, it was felt that it was not going to be rewritten, but kept in its original form until possible renewal at the end of that contract. And we might be rewritten at that point, correct?"
Correct. My discussion with the representatives from the City of Lethbridge is that there's no firm commitment at this point for the ambulance to be centralized, that it's, they believe it's going to happen, but because this agreement is somewhat retroactive, and I apologize that it's retroactive, but the template agreement that was provided to us, I was not comfortable with, and so, like Counselor Smith said, we went back and forth quite a bit before we came to terms on, on an agreement that I felt was good for our community as well. So this does still include emergency services, and the City of Lethbridge is currently dispatching our ambulance, but moving forward, it's our understanding that that will be for fire only, and that is the portion of the contract that we have paid in the past as well. So.
So does this, if the ambulance is, if they do go through, go ahead with it and centralizing the ambulance services in Calgary, I think, from wherever they're going to do it, does this need to be reworked again, or is this, is this going to be?
Yeah, this agreement expires December of 2014, so I would anticipate by the end of this year, we will be renegotiating this contract already.
Okay.
So would we recommend that we accept this agreement as written and presented by administration?
Okay, recommended by Counselor Cronin, that we accept the, that we accept the dispatching agreement for now? Any, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Seven B, Parks and Rec, seven V one, the campground. The operators are, there's a D schedule in there where they're looking to just change some of the rates for the campground. Couples' daily rates, I think, they're just rounding to the nearest zero, I think, and, and I think for monthly, because they're not, there's a, there's a number of people that are enjoying our campground at a monthly rate, and we're not receiving a lot of our daily rates, which would net more income for the, for the, for the campground, so. They're looking at increasing the monthly rate. In the off-season, a lot less than they are in the, in the, in the busy season, so. They're recommending about a thirty, thirty dollar increase in, was it May, June, September? And then July and August, approximately a hundred dollar increase per month, per campsite, per campsite as well there, so. Just, just the increase there, just to make sure that we're generating revenue, that we should be generating, Counselor Cronin?
I understand we should recover as much of the money that we should, but seems to me that the proposal is for 2014, right? So they will have the time to advertise the increase of a hundred dollars. So that's fair.
The monthly portion is recommended for 2014. The daily increase is recommended for June of 2014.
Right, that's what I understood.
Which is minimal, yeah, which is less than all the properties.
To clarify, Mr. Chairman, I'm guessing, but any reservations that are now standing, they won't be able to change for twenty, I mean, I realize it's cents, it's just pennies.
Yeah.
But typically, after the fact, they have to stick with what it was reserved at the time.
I would think that would be correct, yeah.
There's new reservations.
That's totally the reason they just wanted to round it up, so they're not dealing with pennies and nickels and orders as well.
Counselor Cronin?
This is for administration, maybe for, to help us understand. It seems to me, when we renegotiated the campground rates, there was a clause that anything above a certain amount, the operator will be receiving that amount. Is that pertains to this change in schedule also?
Well, this would potentially have an effect on revenues, yes.
But is the excess revenue then going to go directly to the operator? Or is it going to be shared between the town and the operator?
If they exceed, it's a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand revenue, then it goes directly to them, yes.
So it was, yeah, I couldn't remember the, the ceiling. It was a hundred thousand. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions on that, though? Can I have a motion that would recommend the proposed changes?
Recommend the council to have the rate increases for 2014 and one for 2013.
Okay, discussion?
Just a point of order. Do we in fact make this recommendation, or does council make the recommendation via Parks and Recreation Body? Or what, what role does Parks and Recreation Body play in this process, in this decision? Because it, it does in fact materially change the fees in the contract.
Did that actually go to Parks and Rec?
This was discussed in Parks and Rec. I, I don't remember the exact amount of money being discussed. I know there was a discuss of, discussion of raising it because they're having so many people wanting to put for four months, they're worried about that impacting on day users. They like that idea because it fills in the Monday to Thursday, but they're also getting it for about eighteen bucks a night.
So was there a recommendation from your body?
There was a recommendation, but I do not remember a dollar figure at that time. But I do know with the, with the, the first fees, they're just, they wanted to round those up. That was discussed, no problem there. I don't remember discussion of that amount of money being raised at seven or eight dollars and seventy-five cents. I don't remember that, so.
You didn't receive the rates, because we didn't receive the rates till after the Parks and Rec.
So I'm not losing my mind, good, all right?
So would it be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, that we put this through a different procedure then? Or not worry about the involvement of Parks and Rec? I hate to take them out of the loop on this, because.
Again, this would have been the recommendation outside of a meeting. I'm supposing this came from Parks and Rec. Am I correct in that?
It did come.
Other than the rates. It was discussed at Parks and Rec.
We did discuss the increase, yes, just not the rates.
So should the recommendation be to have the 2014 rate reviewed by the Parks and Rec and brought back as a recommendation to council?
The only problem with that is we only need quarter days, so we wouldn't be meeting again till the end of August or thereabouts.
But it would make no difference, because 2014 rate, the other one is no problem. It's a matter of pennies.
Pardon me?
Reservations will be effective for 2014. They're currently taking reservations for 2014.
Could somebody at Parks and Rec be there next week when we do the recommendation?
Well, I am at Parks and Rec, but.
Yeah, but maybe you want to have some kind of.
I can have a little discussion with Randy on it, but, yeah.
Even through email or something like that, to make sure you, you're all on the same page on that one?
Yeah, I can have talk with Shelley and Randy and.
Yeah, I think so. And then you could let us know on.
We didn't talk a dollar figure, but this is about what I assumed they were going to come up with. It's not, this is not as a price to me, if that's what.
Okay, all right.
And that's what I think, I think Counselor Court is in that. Since on that comedian, I think he has a pretty good feel for what's said and what's going on.
If they come back with twelve hundred dollars, I might go, whoa, but this is, this is kind of what I, actually, this might be a little bit lower than I thought they were going to request, so.
Right.
Okay, well.
What's the recommendation table?
Counselor, Counselor Edman has a motion on the table to recommend that council accept proposed changes on there.
Be on the board, I'm comfortable with this. Like the other board members would be too.
Okay, I can speak for them. Okay, all in favor? Okay, polls carried? Okay, so seven B, item two there, pool design update there in the package. There is kind of a picture of what we're expecting our municipal to look like, and maybe, Jeff, if you want to, maybe you can just give us a little rundown on the new.
Jeff? We just wanted to just give a quick update on where we are with the pool. So we are just tweaking the design and coming to some of the final details on the design process. We have Ferrari Westwood Architects out of Lethbridge, which is looking at the site plan, and any amendments that need to be made to the deck area and to the perimeter of the pool. And they're working with Acapulco on that, so they're sending their designs back and forth right now to make sure everything fits. Acapulco intends to be on the site. They're going to start shipping things here soon. They're going to drop a C can off relatively soon. Not to open up that whole camera, but they're going to drop off a C can and start shipping equipment out here right away. We've got the mechanical room of the pool started being gutted. They basically want a clean slate when they get there, and they're going to be here the second week of July to start on the cement and the basin. So we have, we have about five weeks to do demolition, and we're trying to get the county lined up to come with their equipment to get that demolition done. And we're anticipating that the demo of the deck will take about a week. And then some cleanup and expansion of the pool area and all that will take another couple of weeks. And we should be ready when Acapulco gets here at the latter part of July. Couple of questions here, maybe?
Yeah, just a question, does there be a discussion with the skate park?
It's going to depend on what those design layout plans look like when we get them back from Ferrari Westwood. We do think right now we're going to take, let me get my direction straight here, that we're going to incorporate a bit of the southeast portion of that skateboard park right now. And we see that, because we, as you can see on this plan right now, the water slide where it sits can't be there. The elevation drops off dramatically, and we don't want to make provisions for that, so we're going to ship that to the west as far as we can. I think we talked about this before, we don't intend to put the water slide in right now, but we're going to rough, rough it all in, so all the plumbing's in place and the piping and all the mechanical features will be in the mechanical room. So that has to move west, and so Ferrari Westwood's working with Acapulco to figure out how that's going to look, and then we may have a bit of a seating area and a lounging area back on that corner. The one thing we did want to get some feedback from council on, and we brought this up a couple of weeks ago, is the final design needs to be done by the end of the month, because we got to get construction drawings totally done and get engineers approved and all the permits and all that stuff going. So we need some kind of public consultation piece. Now, we don't anticipate that, we don't, we don't intend to call the public consultation piece to drastically change the design of the pool. We're not really looking to start from scratch. We've had this consultation fairly thoroughly. But we just want to know if council would like us to have that public open house with, with the latest conceptual of the time? Or do we just have it once the design is pretty much finalized and just to show people what the plan is? Or a little bit of feedback there so we can plan a date on that? Because if it's the former, we need to plan it sooner than if it's the latter.
In the minutes that we read today and approved, there was some recommendation that we had put forward that to consult with the HECA Society, with the Long Term Care, I don't remember which other group, the lifeguards. And I think because the design is not new, it's really similar to what we presented before, I really feel personally that if we had those groups kind of have a thorough look at it and say, "Yeah, it will work for our clients," and I think it will, from what I understood at the presentation, then I really think we have done fairly good due diligence to the whole process of consultation. Personally, I feel so.
Just on that, Dave has started, he mentioned to me, he's talking with the Alberta Lifeguarding Association just to talk about logistics of anything they might see, and he started down that, that process with some.
So I think those are the important people for that project, really. And a swim, swim club.
Yeah, I've already talked to Paula, she'll be into.
They wanted that six lane.
Does West Winds get turfed during construction?
Say that again?
An exercise club?
Oh, no, I don't think so. We have to move some things around to get equipment in and out, because we're going to try and, boy, let me back up a sentence, maybe. We don't quite yet know the logistics of getting all the equipment into the mechanical room. We think we can get it all through the stairway, but it may involve some of the equipment having to be moved temporarily just while we get that in there. Our initial thought was we were going to have to dig down and core a hole in the wall of the mechanical room, and it looks like we won't have to do that, but we may have to take a couple of blocks out of the door going down into the head gym. So some light construction, but certainly not coring a hole in the basement. And we hope it's temporary if any, any interruption.
Sir, we'll go Marion and Mary Scott.
It goes without saying that, given the nature of a construction area, it's going to have to be chain linked off, and depending on where that future location of the water slide ends up, will that, well, maybe we'll have to chain link off the skateboard park.
You're going to see the north wall and the south wall come down as one of the first things that happens as part of the demolition, so the whole north part will be, having to be cordoned off, as well as pretty much the whole south part. Well, we'll try and keep it localized to where they're working to keep that open as long as we can. But I, again, until we kind of see the logistics needed to get equipment in and out, an ingress and egress for the trucks hauling the cement away, and if it has to be interrupted, we'll try and make it temporary and minimal impact. But yes, there's going to be some impact to the stakeholder use of that facility.
For the record, I haven't had any citizen input to me personally regarding the impairment or the possible removal of the skateboard park, so.
If I could just ask, is there, is there an appetite for council for us to have an open house when the design is decided to show what we're doing and to, to have that information session? Let's call it that, an information session?
That's.
Is that something we can do in maybe September when schools back in?
That's what I'd like to see is the, the final design draft, and then just have the people come in and see exactly what we're doing. We've already talked to the stakeholders, the swim clubs and the other people like that, so I think they're the ones that would probably, you know, the seniors groups and things like that. So those would be the ones I think could help with the design.
My thoughts on that are, I think, I think probably similar to those that have been expressed. But I think it would be nice if we could publish somewhere on, on a prominent wall a picture of the design so that people would have a chance to, to kind of see what we're doing.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, we've got to actually do some signage and a few things that recognize the granters, but no problem once this, in fact, we're hoping we're, we have a conversation with them a week from Thursday again. We're hoping to have most of the design elements fairly sorted out, and, and no problem getting large underwears and things like that, so that should work out very well.
Could we also put it on the awareness night as a project? It's in November sometimes, so it wouldn't be so far away.
Yeah, we could do a whole booth with.
There's quite a few people going through.
Yeah, those are easy, easy things for us to do, should be no problem.
Okay, any, it's good there, we're okay there, all married?
Yeah, I just have one question for council. Noel's been made aware of the potential for a grant that may help us with recreation facility. And the question I have is, do you want us to start somewhat of a fundraising effort for the slide at this point?
Yes, that's what I wanted to talk about.
The grant is subject to the input from citizens or businesses within the community, not necessarily municipal dollars. So we just thought it was a prime opportunity. I think we could get potentially up to a hundred thousand dollars. So if you're interested in that, we can start somewhat of a fundraising effort, maybe with the swim club, to say this is a specific thing we're looking for, and could you start some fun, community fundraising?
That seems a great idea.
Perfect. So what do we need to go forward with this in?
I just think, just generally, yeah, I just wanted council to be aware of that. So we'll pursue the grant as well as some fundraising efforts.
We also just wanted to make it council where this is, we're going ahead, or at the point of no return, so things are all happening. We're entering into contracts and getting people lined up, and we're going to demolish the old place, so we've got to build a new one.
Thanks, Jeff, thanks for all your questions. Okay, number seven C, electrical, RRO rates?
Sum it up in one word.
Yeah, Counselor Court summed it up in one word, they're going up. They are, you just have to be aware that it is the retail portion of it that will be going up there. We are, the distribution kind of person is distribution only, so we have no plans, I believe at this point, that increase.
What is an RRO rate?
Oh, sorry, that's the residential rate option.
Regulated.
Do you want me to speak to it?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. The regulated rate option is the default rate that is for electricity if individuals have not chosen a supplier and entered into a contract. So for instance, NMAX has the rate that you can enter into a contract and you get eight cents of kilowatt hour or whatever. The regulated rate option is actually set provincial-wide, and we as a municipality have a responsibility under the act to provide for the regulated rate option. We have contracted that with NMAX Energy. So the distribution tariff portion of that is set by our council, but the energy portion is based on market. And the information that was provided to you in your background there was from the NMAX stating that they anticipate that that market is going to increase for a couple of reasons, for the summer months. One is related to the anticipation that gas prices are going to increase, and the second is Trans Delta has a plant that is going to be shut down for a substantial period of time, and that background is there in the news release. I also put in front of you, and Counselor Smith and I reviewed this earlier, but, and I apologize, I should have probably put it in your packages, but in front of you tonight is the regulated rate energy list that I put from back to July of 2011. So you can see that the energy charge has changed substantially during that time. It's gone from a low of about six cents, I think, is the lowest it's ever been, six point three cents in May of 2012, to a high of fifteen point zero eight cents in January of 2012. In 2013, we've gone in January from nine cents down to seven cents in June, but they do anticipate that those rates are going to jump somewhere between eleven to thirteen cents in the summer months. So we just wanted to make council aware of that in case you're getting questions from citizens as their utility bills do potentially increase. Some people have chosen not to enter into a contract and sort of just follow the market because they feel that at the end of the day, maybe it balances out to a better deal for them than signing into a fixed-rate contract. So any questions about how the RRO works?
It's not so much how it works, Marion. I'm wondering, can we do a fairly strong press release to help people understand that don't call the town, we have nothing to do with it?
Yeah, I think we could put out a press release just explaining that we've been made aware that there's potential and that citizens have the option of entering into contracts.
Yeah, I think I need to understand a little bit what the options, because really they have one month, and if they are in a contract, they have about a month to change service provider if they even choose to.
Well, each contract may be different, so I'm not about to say they have a month to change contracts.
Well, in general, it's about one month that you have.
And again, this is just projections, right? So there's no, there's no firm, yes, it's going to be thirteen cents in July or August, but they're just looking forward at what potentially is coming down the pipes and what may affect those rates.
But if we advise, there is a strong chance that it will happen.
Counselor, agree?
Yeah, I thought maybe I should just mention, when we were at the AUMA convention, I went to one of the sessions with the Alberta Consumers Advocate, and they put on a chart, you know, showing the regulated rate options and the various providers' contract rates over, you know, the last few years, and for the most part, regulated rate option was still the best choice. You know, I mean, it's not to say that in the future it will be, but over the past several years, I think, other than maybe one year, the regulated rate option was still the cheapest really for, you know, in the long term, but just thought I'd maybe mention that.
Yeah, and that is, the Alberta Utilities Commission does not approve the regulated rate, but they do approve the formula that that rate is based on, and I think that that's why maybe you've seen that it stayed in line with those contracts, is because the formula that's used has to be proven by the Alberta Utilities Commission. It's not just a free-for-all, right?
Okay, any other questions for, thanks, Marion.
We'll do a press release then.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine, correspondence, Alberta Transportation, just showing on there transportation grants, they can give them to the town, parks, and their usual transportation grants that we get from the province here. Any questions on that? Nine B, Alberta Culture. Alberta Culture, from September 27th to the 29th are Alberta Culture Days, so they encourage municipalities or groups to do something cultural now to celebrate that, to celebrate that day there, or that three days there. Nine C, EMS Dispatch, there's some information in your background, I believe there, from Greg Widdick, they're doing a consultation with the municipalities. Says leading consultation process to develop the transition plan that will allow government and municipalities to deal with the impacts of emergency medical services, EMS Dispatch consultation. So they're doing an online consultation there. They asked that the municipalities consult with the mayors, the reeves, the council, the fire chief, and they're only allowing what's one submission per community, so it's best that we speak with those people and see what's going to be best for our community and then go in there and voice our opinion. Mary Scott, and then Counselor Cronin?
I just have a question for administration to date. Have we had, or maybe possibly through our delegate to fire, what dialogue have we had to date with our fire, our fire chief, Danny Melvin? His thoughts on the emergency response dispatch?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment on that. I just received an email from Danny Melvin at our EMS board meeting on Thursday. He's invited a member from the Alberta Health Service, Greg Erickson, to come and make a presentation to the board, so I'm hoping we will get a little more information on at least their sales pitch on it, and can possibly report back on at least what they say, and then we can maybe have a little better idea of what we want to, how we want to respond.
And I, you know, welcome that. I'm a little concerned that there is the prospect that we will have a two-headed monster, that we will have 911 be centralized for Alberta Health, ambulance specifically, and more localized for the fireside, and quite frankly, I have more faith in the localized model. So I await the response that you'll bring back to us from our Alberta Health, and it just concerns me.
Marion, how's it going? I actually asked a representative from the city of Lethbridge if they would be willing to come and present to our council about what they felt the impact would be. Their preference was to present to the mayors and reeves meeting last Friday?
No, the first of June was Saturday. So mayors and reeves is this Friday.
So could you report back then next Tuesday as to what that presentation is? We anticipate there will be an impact, but I think if you can kind of keep some notes to report back on that, Mary Scott, that would be great.
Okay, any further questions on that?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mary Scott, adjourn all here.
Okay, I said I'd bring the information on the fly, and at what time? It says breakfast is going to be served from eight till 10:30, so if we're there at eight or...
Eight to 10:30?
Eight till 10:30 is when breakfast.
Can you remind us of the date again?
June 15th.
Yes.
We're not going to fly out.
This is the month of pancakes.
We're not going to fly out.
We have helicopters flying out.
The airport, yeah, so they'd like us to be there and help put pancakes, I think, so we get their little...
I'll be the...
Sure.
On the 14th?
June 15th, Saturday.